Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Stewart and I am the CEO of the Library Foundation SD. And I want to thank you all for joining us today. Today's event is sponsored by the partners that make up the Libraries Transform SD Coalition, The Library Foundation, the Friends of the San Diego Public Library, and the San Diego Library Commission. I am joined this afternoon by Wendy Urashima-Kahn, Chair of the San Diego Library Commission, and Anne McDonald, President of the Friends of the San Diego Public Library. We are pleased to have the honor of welcoming District Six candidate Kent Lee, so that he can share his vision for the future of our city and of our libraries. We know how busy campaigns can be, and so we're very grateful for the generous amount of time that he has provided. Before we welcome Kent to join us, I'd like to share a little bit about the format of the event. Once Kent joins us, we will have the opportunity, he will have the opportunity to share a brief opening statement, giving us some insight about his background, why he has decided to run for City Council, and his connection to San Diego libraries. Wendy, Anne, and I will ask about six questions that were prepared in advance and made available to both District Six candidates. We are finalizing the day and the time for our conversation with candidate Tommy Howe, and afterwards, both videos will be available for viewing on the Library Foundation's YouTube page. At the conclusion of the prepared questions, we will present a couple of questions from our audience. Anyone is welcome to submit a question in the Questions tab below your screen, and some have already been emailed to me as well. Again, we'll only have time for a few, so we may not be able to get to all of them. I'd also like to bring your attention to the Library Foundation's link in the chat. Please click this link if you are interested in learning more about our Libraries Transform SD Coalition, our advocacy efforts, and to subscribe to Library Transform SD Advocacy Alerts. With that, I'm very pleased to invite District Six City Council candidate Kent Lee to join us to introduce himself and to share a little bit about his vision for our libraries. Kent, thank you for joining us this afternoon.
Thank you for having me, and thanks to everyone for joining as well. Happy to just provide a little bit of an introduction. So my name is Kent Lee. I am a candidate for San Diego City Council in the sixth district. And I think as many might know, with the changes in redistricting, the communities have shifted a little bit in the district. And so the district now encompasses a very large portion of University City, Surrano Valley, Mir Mesa, portions of Scripps Ranch, and much of the Kearney Mesa Convoy region as well. I happen to be a 16-year resident of the district. My wife and I actually met at UC San Diego. We're raising two young kids, two and now five years old, right here within the district. And most of my background has largely been from a nonprofit perspective. For the last six years or so, I've been running an organization called Pacific Arts Movement, which helps to present the San Diego Asian Film Festival along with other youth educational programming. Been a longtime volunteer within the community. I serve on the Merrius Community Planning Group. I've served as the treasurer for the Asian Business Association for a number of years, and I continue to serve my alma mater on the UC San Diego Chancellors' Community Advisory Board and in other capacities. And I think largely why I'm here and running for the seat is because I really believe in bringing a voice from the community, someone who has served and really been a part of the fabric within our local communities to have a voice at City Hall. I happen to live really just two blocks away from the Mir Mesa Library, which I'm sure we'll talk about a little bit. But, you know, I've had the opportunity to think of it not just as a space, you know, in the traditional sense of when we think of libraries, but it's also a really a community space for a lot of us. And knowing that Mir Mesa, as an example, is a community that was built with little public facilities, how important our library is in terms of actually bringing people together locally. So I think from there, I'm happy to answer questions and look forward to the discussion.
All right. Well, thank you, Kent. It's always good to see you. Thank you for sharing a little bit about yourself, your vision for the city and for your council district, but really appreciate all that you have already done for our community. You've done great work, and thank you for that. So it's great to see you this afternoon. Before we continue, I'd just like to formally introduce myself. I am Wendy Urashima-Kahn, and today I am serving in my capacity as Chair for the San Diego Public Library Commission. So commissioners are nominated by the mayor and approved by the City Council. And what we do is we provide guidance on policy impacting the library system. So the commission, as well as the Friends and the Foundation, we all care very deeply about San Diego and our libraries and our library system. And we're always looking at how can we increase equity across the system? And this includes it in a broad, really in a broad sense. So access to programs, resources, and really digital equity as well. So with that in mind, I think we are, as we're coming out of the pandemic, or some would say we're somewhat still in it. The pandemic, it really highlighted for us dramatic inequities across our region. And among that was really that kind of access piece to technology. So, you know, we know that now that technology is no longer a luxury, but for many San Diegans, it's a lifeline, right? So as a library strives to close that gap, can you share your vision, Kent, for how the library might play a role in creating a more equitable San Diego?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I think maybe even taking a step back, it's, I think the pandemic has really shifted for many of us the mindset of how communities sort of function and what the needs are in terms of addressing our communities from a holistic standpoint. And it's not just through libraries. I think we can think of it through schools and through a lot of our other sort of community functions, where during the pandemic, we saw that there was really a significant disparity between who had access and who didn't. You know, and, and really, as that shift changed, how we look at our communities, I think we've also understood that, you know, the services that we provide to residents, especially through our public facilities, needs to address more than just the, maybe the core service that we typically think of, right? Schools, we think of education. Libraries may be very similar, but what we have found is that, you know, the services we're providing go far beyond that. You know, we are addressing how folks have access to things like being able to get online, to be able to access resources, digital materials, and technology that you might not always have the same, you know, ability to access when you're at home. And I think our libraries have become a very important part of that equation, especially in the last couple of years, knowing that some of the biggest divides that we're seeing in the community happen to be from a digital standpoint. I mean, the pandemic highlighted very much so those families and households that were able to access, you know, learning and education at home because they have the technology, and those who might actually depend on having services that, that they might only be able to get through something like the library. And so I think equity is a huge component of this. It's obviously a big part of the master plan that's been developed and discussed over the last couple of years. But, you know, when we think of equity, I really like to point out that it's a lot more than what people think of from a geographical standpoint. You know, in San Diego, we often think of equity in terms of which communities traditionally have had more or less access in terms of technology and resources. But I think it goes a little bit beyond that as well. You know, I'm in Mir Mesa, as an example, and Mir Mesa, like a couple of our surrounding communities in District Six are actually some of the older communities within San Diego. You know, I think of Mir Mesa, Claremont University City, communities who have been here for 50 to 70 years. And so as a result, the facilities and the services that we provide are aged as well. And, you know, we may not be the portions of San Diego that have the most inequitable access, but because we are older communities, we may not have the same resources, facilities, and services that, you know, newer facilities might have across San Diego. And so I think beyond just thinking of it from a geographical standpoint, we have to think of, you know, which communities have different types of resources, and what do we need to do to tailor what we provide to match the communities that we're serving? I think that's maybe the most exciting thing to have seen come out of the master plan was this recognition that there's no one-size-fits-all for all of us in San Diego, that every community has different needs based on what they have access to, and that we should really consider how we tailor the services we provide, the facilities that we offer to match the needs of the communities that we have. And I think that's what equity ultimately is. It's understanding who has had access to resources or not. How could we design what we provide to match those communities and the residents that we aim to serve? And to, you know, really think about our resources in this holistic way moving forward.
Anne?
Thank you for that answer. I'm Anne McDonald, the President of the Friends of the San Diego Public Library, and we have branches at all 36 libraries, but 33 of them are under the 501(c)(3) that I represent. Sin, La Jolla, Branch of Bernardo, and Terra Santa are separately incorporated right now. Sorry for that phone. The Friends of the San Diego Public Library is honored to join the Library Foundation to bring private support to the library system. The Friends of the Library have been in existence for more than 40 years with chapters at each branch library. Friends volunteers raise funds through used book sales and private donations. And we use these funds to provide materials, equipment, and program resources to each branch. And for the last 18 years, the Friends have partnered with the Library Foundation to successfully raise $1 million in private funds that are matched by the city. So with that introduction, I'll ask our second question of the event. Without the inclusion of private philanthropy, the city of San Diego's spending for library materials such as books, digital databases, language acquisition software, resources for the visually impaired, and eBooks is under $2 per capita, one of the lowest among large metropolitan areas in the nation, and approximately half of what the county of San Diego spends. Additionally, there have only recently been increases in this budget, the first time in over a decade. As a council member, would you commit to increasing the amount of funds the city spends on library materials and increase the amount of the city match to facilitate additional philanthropy?
Thanks, Anne, for the question. I mean, I think the simple answer is yes. I mean, we, but, but I think to really dive deeper than that, I think the challenge that we all recognize we face as a city is that we are actually very limited in many cases to the resources and the revenue that we are able to generate. And that has made us extremely challenged in terms of meeting many of the services and needs that we have as a city. Despite being the largest city, you know, in the country, that funding on a number of fronts is lacking. And I would even point out, I mean, I wish we could say it was just in specific areas, but I think most folks know that as a city, you know, we have been unable to provide consistent raises, you know, to have compensation for our staff that matches even sort of our comparative jurisdictions, other municipalities in our region for the better part of over a decade. And we're seeing that reflected nowadays in terms of the shortage that we have in staffing across many city departments. And I think it's indicative of the fact that if we truly believe in providing services that are at the quality level that we need to be a world-class city, that we need to be able to also take care of the people who deliver those services. I think that has been sort of a critical component, something that I have been really heartened to see under our current leadership, is that we have also changed much of the way that we look at our five-year forecasting in terms of budgets, right? I mean, something that the city did not do for many years is every time we built a budget forecast for the next five years, we made a simple assumption that we would simply give no raises, not even a cost of living one to any of our city staff year after year. And I think if we plan for that at the get-go, that means we're almost certainly going to achieve that when, when push comes to shove. And so to see that as a city, we are now actually planning in, in our five-year forecasts, you know, compensation increases that would at least consider the cost of living challenges that we have. And everyone knows that we are in an environment right now where the cost of every component of living in San Diego has gone up, that we can't certainly just assume that we would provide the same level of services and have the same quality of staff if we can't commit to actually supporting that. What that means, though, is that as a city, we really have to tackle the challenges we have from a revenue standpoint. You know, I think that's where, understanding that, for example, as a city, we still, as much as people like to harp on the fact that California has, you know, significant taxes, I think people don't recognize sometimes that San Diego actually is not necessarily at the same level of revenue generation that many other jurisdictions have. You know, we charge less to tourists who stay in San Diego than almost any other major city in the state. And we need to sort of come up with those shortfalls and understanding how we could generate revenue without just burdening our own taxpayers so that we can support programs that we want to deliver. And we should see, you know, our libraries, our parks, many of these core services as being exactly that, the core to what we need to provide the residents of San Diego to ensure that we actually have the quality of life that we want to provide. And so, you know, I would be supportive of finding ways in which we could continue to support the program. It's not just libraries. You know, I come from a nonprofit side of the world where I've been in the arts and culture world for years. And I recognize that as a city, even though we had long committed to reaching certain levels of funding for arts and culture, that even to this day, we have not achieved that. And I think we need to make a concerted plan to uplift all of our programming so that we can, you know, actually land where we've committed to being for all of these years. I will say that private philanthropy dollars is still important, right? I think, and we don't, we shouldn't see them simply as covering the gaps that we have, which is, I think, what's happening today. But we should see them as opportunities that we should be able to get matched, exactly as you said, Anne. Like, I think where we as a city need to position ourselves is to be able to take advantage of every bit of revenue that we could generate, every bit of funding that comes from even outside of San Diego. That means positioning the city of San Diego to be able to be competitive on every grant funding opportunity that exists outside of our region, to secure funding from a state and federal level to support our programming, and as a result, to be able to also secure the philanthropic dollars that have, you know, then a double or tripled impact from a local standpoint.
I appreciate you mentioning two things right here, one staff. And I think that's, that it looks like that there is a question for the audience that we will touch on a little bit later as it pertains to staff and being able to staff our, our city departments, but then also being able to recognize, you know, core services, right? And, and I have talked a lot about this recently. You know, the, the idea that the libraries, parks, arts and culture, or neighborhood assets are infrastructure, right? The social infrastructure of what it is that we're able to support and provide communities, I think, is paramount to having a great city, not just America's finest city, but a great city, you know. Our mayor talks quite a bit about wanting to ensure that San Diego really is indicative, or really is representative of that kind of a great city. One of the things, and you touched on this earlier on, is the development of the new library master plan. And I think, you know, one of the important things that the, that this current iteration of the new master plan takes into account is not just facilities, but also operations and services. And the last, you know, if, if for our guests here, the last citywide plan to support the library system was created at the end of the last century, if I'm old enough to say that now, at the turn of the last century, adopted by the City Council in 2002. And the plan envisioned building or improving 24 libraries throughout the city by roughly 2012. At the heart of the plan, of course, was the development and the building of the new central library, which we were thrilled to see open in 2013. But unfortunately, that plan did not take into account growth, development, technology. I mean, it was severely outdated, and unfortunately, not just services, but communities were left out of the plan. And so therefore, you know, the foundation, like I said, is leading the effort to develop the new, the new master plan. And the Phase One framework, which you've seen as completed last year, excuse me, presented to the City Council last fall, and we're currently working to complete the final phase. You've already begun to touch a little bit on why this is important. And I particularly appreciate the phrase, "no one-size-fits-all," right? We are, we are a community of communities, and it's so important to recognize that. And District Six is itself a community of communities. Can you share why this is a little bit deeper, why this is important? And what does the development of the new master plan mean to you with regards to the expected growth in the development that your District Six is expected to realize in the coming decade?
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. I think when, when I think of the plan broadly, I think the idea of like no one-size-fits-all is really important because, I mean, our communities are all growing from a different, you know, at different rates. And I think the needs within those communities, I think we've identified, especially over the last couple of years, can be drastically different. And I think there are communities where it's not just the facility and what it services, but what's actually being offered throughout, through the facility in terms of how it serves a community that becomes really important. And we know that there are some communities that perhaps space is critical, right? Like, in giving space for a community to be able to connect and engage is critical. But there are others where perhaps the technology and the access to resources that aren't available otherwise is actually just as critical, if not more, than space. And I think recognizing that every community has a different need is, is maybe the one element out of the plan that I was most heartened to see. I mean, here in Mir Mesa, I mean, we are one of the largest residential communities in all of San Diego. We're nearing 80,000 residents. Last night, actually, the Mir Mesa Community Planning Group, which I've, you know, had the opportunity to serve on for the last nine years, we actually basically moved forward the Mir Mesa Community Plan update for what the next 20, 30 years of our community might look like from a growth perspective. And I think, you know, we as a group unanimously passed a set of recommendations to bring to the city, and a lot of it was about infrastructure. And I think you nailed it. I mean, infrastructure is not just streets, water, sewage, which are certainly very important, but it also includes everything that makes a community livable, including our libraries, our parks, our schools, you know, ensuring that we have the public facilities that match up with what our growing communities are. And we only have one public library in Mir Mesa, you know, at the moment, serving nearly 80,000 residents. And if we continue to see growth, which most of San Diego is expecting over the next, you know, couple of decades, that means we would still have only one library serving, you know, 100,000-plus residents someday in the future. And, and, and so I think beyond just thinking about how we grow from a facility standpoint, which has its own challenges, right? We could certainly be replacing existing library facilities, getting the ones that are not really up to the par in terms of size to serve our communities, you know, to change. But I think beyond that, we've got to think of what are the resources and services we're providing out of the existing spaces that we have? And does that match what the community needs? And I, and I think I'm presuming that with every single community, we're going to see a slightly different answer. And, and that's, you know, perhaps what I look forward most to is, as the plan sort of comes underway, how do we really determine what's needed within, you know, each of our communities? And again, I don't think it's just geography. I think it's, it's, it goes without saying that in a lot of South and Southeast San Diego, we have historically, right, fewer facilities, smaller facilities that have not met the needs of those communities, even as they've grown. But again, I would even point out that even in our aging communities, you know, like in University City or Mir Mesa, both a part of D6, or in Kearney Mesa, where there's, where most of the housing development that we're anticipating over the next couple of decades, there is no library within that direct space. I mean, these are the plans that we have to begin making, not just in terms of the facilities, but, you know, how do we actually deliver services to those communities, even if the facilities don't exist?
Well, as we are, as we're continuing to develop this, this plan, I'm excited to say, you know, of course, the net, this next final stage of the master plan will really dig deep and encourage conversations, really specific conversations with each of our library branches and each of our neighborhoods around how we are, how we are envisioning the next, you know, iteration again of our library system as it keeps going. Before Wendy asks the next question, I just want to let everyone know that we have a little bit of an issue maybe with the chat section. So if you have some comments or questions, it looks as though the Q and A tab is working just fine. So feel free, as your guests, as you, as you have some thoughts, comments, questions, to put them in the Q and A section instead of looking for the chat. With that, Wendy, I will let you.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, Q and A, Q and A works great. Thank you, Kent, for your answer. And I know we're all really, really excited and hopeful, you know, that the master plan can just really help us plan for the library of the future and what that might look like. So I know we were talking a little bit about facilities, but it's one of the big things that we talk about, and you even touched upon it, you know, in the older communities. And at the time, you know, that was a great Mir Mesa library. You look at the growth, and so I just want to take a moment to talk a little bit more about, as a council member, how you would possibly invest in library infrastructure. So according, our audience may not know, but according to a recent facility report conducted by the city, or maybe this isn't a surprise, actually, nearly 30% of our libraries are in poor condition. So not all neighborhoods, but 30%, which is kind of disappointing. We have a basic maintenance backlog of over $50 million. And so the independent budget analyst has identified libraries as one of the largest areas of underfunded infrastructure needs. So how would you suggest the council address the infrastructure backlog and support needed facility improvements for libraries?
I think this is where I'm going to be somewhat candid. I think the greatest challenge sometimes we have as a city is that we, we develop a lot of wonderful plans. But the real, the real question comes in the implementation. I think we see this in every one of our community plans. This is what came up in Mir Mesa last night, which is, you know, we know our community is going to grow. We're planning for it. But the real question came down to, how do we actually deliver the infrastructure? And how do we ensure that the city delivers the infrastructure we need to match up with the plan that we build? And I think that's similar with the master plan. I mean, we could certainly identify all of these gaps and these needs, but that also means that we will need a way to actually implement it and to fund it. I think we have to be honest with ourselves and recognizing that the city as it's currently structured is not going to simply have the capacity and ability to meet that infrastructure shortfall. I mean, that, that's the case with all of our lack of infrastructure, right? And I think when the audit has been done and we've identified, I think it's closing on now $5 billion of infrastructure backlog in the city, you know, a huge chunk of that, for example, is stormwater and, and an amount that exceeds our city's annual budget. So any kind of planning we do over 20 years isn't going to resolve that. And so we know that we need to be able to secure that, that support in different ways. I think one of them is without a doubt that the more that we can do, especially right now, knowing that there is additional funding available from a state standpoint, from a federal standpoint for infrastructure in particular. I mean, maybe this is an opportunity where we really get to argue that infrastructure is a lot more than just streets and bridges and sidewalks, but, you know, and highways perhaps, but, but also how do we actually serve our communities through facilities that we need in local communities? I think one that might go without saying that I know being explored at the moment is just the consideration of how we can generate additional revenue in 2024. You know, if, if there is going to be a balance measure that comes to the table that specifically looks to set aside funding, especially from a capital standpoint to support our parks and libraries, to really think about how our electeds from a local level can be advocates for an opportunity like that at a regional level. Because, you know, I think we recognize it, that we will always go through cyclical sort of challenges with our budget. And in good years, when our budget looks like it's strong, you know, we get to reap the benefits of that across the board. But I think we also recognize that in bad years, the places that have always seemed to be the first to get cuts when it comes to funding tends to be our libraries and our parks, you know, in terms of reduced hours, staffing. And it's really tough to watch that happen because, I mean, yes, it means that in good years, we're going to sort of pick that back up. But, you know, ours, we, we all know this, our city is not that nimble considering our size, where, you know, if we lose a chunk of staff one year because we had to make cuts, that we could simply pick that back up the next year, and it all is the same. And I think during the pandemic, we saw that. We saw that we needed to reduce, and we chose to reduce support on the library side. And that also meant that as we sort of picked back up, we didn't have the exact same structure from a staffing standpoint. And we had to rethink how we are allocating positions. We have to rethink the staffing model that we have existing. And that cyclical cycle is not healthy from a community standpoint because it just means that the facilities we have, the availability of that, the services we provide, the staffing that goes with it, ends up being very uncertain. So I think what we can do from a city standpoint to build more certainty into that, you know, to weather sort of these cycles would be important so that we are actually very consistent with the services we provide.
I know that Anne's question coming up, we'll, we'll dive a little deeper into that. Yeah, the, but unfortunately, it hasn't just been the pandemic when libraries, parks, arts and culture, neighborhood services have been asked to shoulder an element of budget shortfalls, right? And I, and I And I and I and I wish that it would, you know, that we could just simply point to the pandemic as, you know, well, that's that's an outlier. And, you know, we don't have to contend with that anymore. But I think, you know, there's an element of history that shows us that, you know, very often neighborhood services, libraries are asked to identify cuts before other departments. And I know that you have a question about sort of general operating.
Yeah.
And we'll fund it and operating budgets for the libraries.
Kent, thank you for your answer. You've touched on some of the things I'm going to ask you. The next question is about how we fund our library's operations. The library's annual operating budget continues to be far below the six percent of the city's general fund as outlined in the library ordinance. Their current budget is just over three percent of the general fund. This target has never been reached, leaving over five hundred million dollars in unrealized library funding from what our goal was. Additionally, the Libraries Transform Coalition has had to fight to prevent millions in budget reductions in recent budget cycles. While we recognize the economic and financial challenges the city is facing, can you speak to how you would encourage more adequately resourced libraries so that staffing and basic services can be realized?
Certainly. I think if we look at this fall and what's, you know, on the ballot even as as we speak, I'm I'm going to point out something that I think is is critical in terms of when we think of our general fund. And I and I think this is a discussion I have with a lot of our neighbors and our voters, because I think a lot of our challenges go a lot deeper than just saying we'd like to solve the fact that we have streets that are deteriorating. We'd like to provide more funding for parks and libraries. We don't have enough support for public safety. I mean, these are the same themes that come up every single election cycle. And I think the reality behind all of it is that as a city, we have had a lot of fiscal challenges. And it means that if we truly want to address these, we need to begin resolving some of those challenges behind the scenes. It's not the sexiest answer, right? I'd love to tell people that we could fix their potholes and we could fully staff their libraries. But in order to do it, we actually have to have our, you know, financial house in order so that we actually have the the resources to do so. One of the examples of of that this fall, and I'm gonna, you know, take a moment to to applaud Council President Elo Rivera for, you know, taking the leap of doing this, is something that has been identified for, I would say, decades at this point, you know, through our grand juries, from a county standpoint, from our budget analysts at the city standpoint, and and really almost anyone who cares about some degree of fiscal responsibility, which is that, you know, measure B this year that's on the table for the city of San Diego looks at something that we have sort of refused to address over the better part of the last century and that we ask our, we are one of the most unique cities in the country where we have everyone pay the same property taxes across the board into our general fund, but we provide one service, trash, to only half of the residents that we actually serve. And the other half of the residents actually end up paying twice in order to get the same service. And I think that's something that we have to acknowledge has been really unfair as a part of our city's history. But also, if we truly care about fiscal, being fiscally responsible, we also have to recognize that what that really means is that we have for many, many, many years now been pooling funds from our general fund that other cities would actually, you know, be resourced in a different way to to support trash collection. And what that means is that we are literally diverting money away from our streets, our parks, our libraries, our public safety, you know, all of these core city services in order to help provide for trash, which is something that as a city, we absolutely need to be doing. But where this becomes a fiscal responsibility challenge is that the cost of that is going to keep going up, especially this year, right? Our city is now going to be implementing composting, not just our city, but because it's something that is a part of the mandate that's come down from a state standpoint across the state. And that means the cost of delivering those services will only go up. And my concern only continues to be that as those costs go up, what items are we going to be pulling that funding from? From our core city services in order to meet our obligations? And we as a city need to be smart enough to not continue that if we truly want to deliver these core city services, because we can't just be pulling funding from one pot to pay for another at the end of the day. We need to do a better job of being more efficient with the money that we we are entrusted with by our voters. We need to be more transparent in how we spend it and to really ensure that the voter's interest is kept in mind at the end of the day. But it also means that we we have to be able to, you know, secure the revenue that we need to support our core services without taking them from one another. You know, that's one way, I think, one small way that that obviously is on this year's ballot that that I've been a proponent of. And I believe that with with adequate explanation, that most of our residents should understand how important it is that we continue funding our core city services in that way.
Sure, yeah, I've I've had that conversation a few times with Council President Elo Rivera about how important it is to get creative, right? To get creative in all aspects of the way that we can bring in more money to the city, you know, taxpayer initiatives, measure B, for example, what he's proposed, regardless of what folks think of the various ways that we need to bring in or we have opportunities to bring in more money into the city. We are at the point where we do need to bring in more money. And and like you're saying, I appreciate hearing regardless of how that money comes in, being more prudent with how that money is spent across each of our our city departments. Before I I've got a couple of audience questions, you had mentioned very quickly some things that you were hearing from District Six residents. And so I'm interested in hearing specifically library, library specific issues. What are you hearing regarding libraries as you have been campaigning in District Six in the last several months?
Well, so I would say it's it's libraries is a part of it, but I think it's a lot broader than that. I think we we, over the last twenty months or so, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about how, you know, in some of our communities, our public facilities are very much aging, right? And I don't think it's just our libraries, it's our libraries, our rec centers, you know, many of the facilities that we provide from a public standpoint, and they they need support. And I think there's been a lot of discussion that if we're going to continue growing as communities, that we need to be more prudent about a city as our city in terms of how we actually get support and funding to ensure that these core city facilities are available. That's come up a couple of times, I think, especially as we come. I would not say we're completely out of the pandemic. I think perhaps as a community, we've certainly learned to live with it. But here, you know, in Miramesa, University City, you know, in Stris Ranch, like our libraries are important community centers. And I think we've recognized how important it is that we have these spaces where people can gather, whether it's for feedback, for community meetings, for nonprofit organizations, et cetera. But we've shifted in the last couple of years. And now we're in this environment where we don't want to just have a space where people can gather. We also want to think about the hybrid opportunity for people to be able to participate right from home. And let's be frank, like a lot of our facilities don't offer that, you know, as a part of our our technology as it currently exists. So I think as we're moving forward, you know, I think folks are going to want to be able to think of their libraries as more than just a gathering space and where they can check out books. But, you know, how how are they accessing other resources, other technology that we're providing? And all the time we get to share with folks that there are things that we have opportunities to get at our libraries, you know, like mobile hotspots for something that really became more prevalent as a resource, right? Through some of our libraries and and a lot of our residents don't realize that that's available to them.
Yeah.
And those are the kinds of things that I think we have the opportunity to share right at the door. The the other thing I think I've I've heard as well is just that, you know, as our communities begin to shift, I think folks have wondered, you know, are we still in this day and an age where, you know, we used to dream of this idea that people could walk or bike to their school or library? And and that has become harder. And so, you know, I think recognizing that not everyone has the same access in terms of distance, travel, to to tap into the same resources is important, right? Like, I'm very fortunate that my family lives just a couple of blocks away from the library, but that's not the case for everyone in in the community. And so how do we, how do we develop more partnerships to deliver those services, you know, within the community? You know, I think there are just so many ways in which we can rethink in this, you know, twenty first century, how we serve our communities. And if we're, you know, creative about it, I think our libraries actually are very critical and central component to doing that.
Well, I I agree with that statement that they are essential and critical to that component. You know, so you mentioned shifting. And so a couple of the the questions that I've heard both emailed to me and then another one in the audience already talks about the redistricting, right? And and so now District Six represents two new libraries. Well, they're not new libraries, but they're new to District Six, North University Community and University Community. Have you had a chance to visit those branches? And if so, do you have any thoughts about how you would propose enhancements to those branches to better serve those specific communities new to District Six?
So, yeah, so I wouldn't even say they're new, because, you know, it's it's redrawing some of the lines. And so we've moved the communities and and the air for the libraries that serve them. For University City in particular, at least the North University City Library, I had a chance to visit back even when I was a student at UCSD and through some of the volunteer that work that we would do in the community. And I think, you know, I I I recognize through the question that, you know, some of the challenges are even with just getting really the day-to-day maintenance within our spaces kept up with, right? Like the fact that we have boarded up windows in, you know, that North UC Library that haven't been replaced and fixed in a chunk of time. I think speaks to not just the needs from a library standpoint, but how difficult it is sometimes for our city to move on what seem like, you know, day-to-day needs. And these are the same things that we hear about potholes and streetlights and, you know, windows in public facilities that end up sitting for a year, two years at a time before someone addresses them. And I think these are the kinds of things that, you know, I recognize that as a council member, we don't necessarily, we're not the ones necessarily filling the pothole and fixing the windows, but we certainly are the communication link between our communities and our city staff and the departments that actually have an opportunity to address these needs. And and half of our role is addressing our constituent services and to ensure that our community's needs are being met. And, you know, very much so, I think, you know, we need to think about how we can be active proponents of that on a day-to-day basis, so.
One of the quick, quick audience question before we begin to wrap up. You had already addressed, you you began to address staffing, which is which is both a byproduct of the pandemic and I think a byproduct of city cumbersome city bureaucracy, perhaps. You know, maybe I'm using a too harsh a word. But the library system, like many city departments, has a disproportionate and overwhelmingly disproportionate number of unfilled positions due mostly in large part to a lengthy and cumbersome city of San Diego hiring process. This has meant the elimination of Sunday hours. This has meant the elimination of or limited hours for all some branches, Sunday hours for all branches. And how is a council member, and this was, this is a this is a part of a series of conversations that we had with council members last year. How as a council member, would you work with the city and encourage a more streamlined process to getting city employees through the application, onboarding and hiring process into our city departments?
Yeah, I think this one drives me sort of crazy, to be frank, because, I mean, we already know that we have challenges from the staffing perspective, without even the hiring process in place, without the pandemic. I mean, the fact that as a city for ten plus years, we paid no raises to any of our employees. You know, I I mean, most of us would be hard pressed to stay in a position where that's the case year after year. And and so if we're serious about addressing that, we have to recognize that we have systemically a challenge that we have to be able to to meet over a period of decades already. But to compound on top of that, yeah, I I I have heard that as a city, we, you know, for those who just might not be aware, that sometimes we can identify a new staff member from a city standpoint, and it could take up to six to nine months to actually get them on board. And how many people interview, accept the job and are willing to wait six to nine months to actually take the job? I mean, that's, it's just not realistic. And I think as a city, we have got to find every opportunity we can to streamline, you know, the process that it takes to getting people on board, because that's preventing us from getting quality folks to begin with and any folks really, in some cases, to be hired. I know the city council isn't directly in charge of, you know, hiring, but we certainly have the ability to make pushes in terms of how we streamline the process, how we remove barriers that might be impacting how we do hiring, you know, in terms of the budget, to think about the kinds of bonuses and support that we need to be able to to have to get lateral folks hired from other places. I mean, we need to be creative at this point to ensure that we're a city that isn't just low rolling, you know, how we operate. And 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 I'll be frank, I mean, that's not just a problem from a hiring standpoint. This is just as much of a challenge if we truly want to be fiscally responsible in terms of how we expend our taxpayer dollars, because time is money in many ways. And the slower we move as a a city, that's a loss that we face, not just in terms of hiring, but in terms of the cost and the effort that it takes to actually run through that process. And we have to, we have to recognize that if we want to save and be able to reinvest in our people, that that's one of the areas that we have to save on.
Thank you so much for recognizing that. That continues, you know, to be a significant challenge and a barrier to being able to expand and enhance services and and our service level and programs and whatnot across the entire system. So I really appreciate you recognizing that. I want to thank you so much for taking the time to spend some a little bit of time with us this afternoon and all of your answers. And for our audience also, I want to let you know that we will put a link to the candidate's campaign website. I think we'll put it in in the chat, but let's try to also put in the Q and A just in case you're not able to access the chat so that you would be able to learn a little bit more about Ken's campaign. And with that, as we begin to conclude our time together, Kent, I want to provide you another brief opportunity to share a quick closing statement.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for this opportunity to to have these discussions. I mean, it it, a lot of this parallels my experience from an arts and culture standpoint, right? And to your point, I mean, the arts and culture community has long talked about a penny for the arts, right? Just dedicating one cent of every two O T dollar that we have, and we have, and all of these years never achieved it. And and I think it goes without saying that if we want to achieve it, first we have to plan for it. And and I think that's what I recognize is that, you know, these things are easy to say, but, you know, we need to be strategic in how we think about the next five to ten years. And if we really want to make an impact, the impacts that we make are not going to be during the time that we're in office, to be frank. I think if we truly want to make an impact, it's laying the foundation to have a city that operates more efficiently, that does generate the revenue that we need, preferably not from our own taxpayers, and and therefore is positioned in the next ten, twenty years to serve our residents better. And that's, you know, why I'm here, I think. Like, I I have very much recognized over the course of this campaign that I'm not here to just deliver one-line responses, you know, to a lot of these questions, but to really think behind the scenes, like, what are the systemic challenges that we face as a city that that we need to solve if we want to address the problems that we face? And that's, I think, where I hope that our our elected officials, our council members, my potential colleagues, that that's where our focus is, is how do we actually solve the problems that we know we're facing as a community today? And and that's what we need to spend our time on. That's what I'm committed to. That's, you know, why I I've, you know, spent so many years in this community and I'm raising my family in this district. And it's because it's the home that I'm hoping my own children and someday grandchildren will have the opportunity to live and enjoy, you know, the San Diego that I had the opportunity to to call home. And that's what we're doing this for, is is ensuring that we leave San Diego in a better place than, you know, when we first came in. And so thank you to all of you for the work that you do from a community standpoint and especially with our libraries. And thanks to everyone who chose to to spend some time today to to talk about our libraries.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much. I want to extend some gratitude to my partners Wendy and Anne and joining me this afternoon. Kent, we know how busy you are and are really grateful to have been able to have this conversation this afternoon. As a reminder to those of you who are listening and who would like to learn more about our coalition and our advocacy efforts, please visit libraryfoundationsd.org by clicking the link in the chat. And additionally, this event and our future conversation with candidate Tommy Howe will be available to be viewed on the Library Foundation's YouTube channel. And with that, thank you all, and thank you again to our special guest. Have a wonderful rest of your afternoon. And with that, thank you all, and thank you again to our special guest. Have a wonderful rest of your afternoon.